All right, this time we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 27th, and this is the regular scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using a WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting and may be participating via the World Wide Web. If you'd like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format, please make sure that you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances at 9:00 a.m., please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. You'll be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. If you wish to speak during the public hearing at 10:00 a.m., please use the Raise Your Hand feature when the public hearing is open and wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to five minutes per speaker. Members in the audience who have filed, who have filled out speaker cards will be taken.
One, two, three, four. I cannot hear.
You better hurry up. He ready to go.
Testing, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, yeah, gotta love it. All right, so if you wish to speak today and are having issues with the Raise Your Hand feature, appropriate feature, please physically raise your hand and so that we may see you and then wait to be recognized. Each vote today will be a verbal vote, verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Okay, we have five present. We will now move to the invocation. Hopefully Pastor Arthur Fox of the New Hope Orthodox Presbyterian Church can hear us. Can you hear us? Apparently not. Can you see us? Go ahead. Yeah.
Nothing.
Okay. Well, at this time, we'll ask the sheriff to please leave us the invocation.
Good morning, everyone. Members of the board. Pastor Fox, I guarantee I won't do it the justice you are gonna do, but I'll do the best I can. Everybody bow your heads. Dear Lord, please bless this board and the decisions that they're about to make today. Bless the men and women in uniform who are out fighting the fires that are currently going on in the state of California. Bless the men and women of the county, the workforce that have all come back to work and are doing the best they can to keep things running smoothly. And most of all, just bless this nation, our country and our local jurisdiction. And let's keep moving forward and heal some wounds that have been opened up over the last few years and do the best we can to make great decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You would please follow me in the flag sleeve. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, at this time, we'll move to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item, and I will remind folks that we do have a 10 o'clock public hearing on the redistricting issue. And so if you are wishing to speak on that item, please wait until we do open the public portion of that agenda item. With that.
Thank you, District Attorney Keith Fagundes. I wanted to inform the board and the public that we concluded our fourth homicide trial last week with the conviction for first degree murder of the murder of Melanie Pate. And that was a long, hard fought battle, but it's testament to the fact that our staff doesn't give up. And it was a testament to Hanford PD and their investigation and everything else. Today, we should be expecting the verdict on an assault on a correctional officer from the state prison. And so we are moving ahead with trials more frequently. And as things open up and we're able to get more jurors, we should be able to conduct more trials each week. So I wanted to inform the board that we are moving forward and it is, it is a huge burden. I think we had nearly 1,800 hearings in court this week. So we are moving along and there's only six departments for that work. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Josh Cunningham with the Kings County Fire Department. I'm gonna give you an update on your fire department. Currently, we have 17 personnel assigned to fires throughout the state on two patrols, two type threes and three overhead positions. They're currently assigned to the Tam, some of them are assigned to the Tamrac Fire, which is just south of South Lake Tahoe. This morning, it's 45% contained with 67,674 acres. The rest of our staff were on the Dixie Fire, which yesterday became the 15th largest fire in California state history and is sitting at 190,625 acres with 21% containment. And then lastly, our Dozer is assigned to Fresno County on a coverage assignment. It's been on that for about 10 days now. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have speaker cards. The first speaker card I have will be coming forward. Oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, and human resources. Today, I'm just bringing our newest analyst to our office, Lika Myers. She is recently a colleague with Tulare County, which we stole, thankfully. She just started yesterday, so we're thrilled that she'll be here. We'll be updating some information with HR for the department so they know, be able to meet Lika and just get her started running right away. And we're thrilled because today is day two for her and she came back. So so far, so good. I just want to do an introduction and we're glad that she's here.
Welcome.
Good luck.
The first speaker card I have is Patrick O'Dowd.
Good morning. Didn't work well. Gentlemen, my name is Patrick O'Dowd and I'm the incoming director to the Dudley Ridge Water District. I know you've received a number of letters in the last couple of days and rather than providing a separate letter, I thought it would be more appropriate and more beneficial for me to drop by and introduce myself and make myself available to answer any questions that you might have. I was nominated to the Board of Dudley Ridge by the Irvine Ranch Water District, which owns 980 acres of land in the Dudley Ridge service area. It's the third largest landowner. And I ran unopposed for that position. An undertaking to seat me to the board for a vacated position was unsuccessful and that matter was referred to you for action. And I note, like I said, you've received correspondence in that regard and I'm hoping that you can act on it favorably and swiftly. A little bit about me, I am the Executive Director of the Salt and Sea Authority. The Salt and Sea Authority is a joint powers agency which is comprised of the Imperial Irrigation District, the Coachella Valley Water District, Imperial and Riverside Counties, and the Torres Martinez Desert Quia Indians. We are developing, our goal is to develop a long-term sustainable solution for the Salt and Sea while addressing the agricultural uses of the sea over time. It was formed in 1992. Prior to becoming the Executive Director of the Salt and Sea Authority, I was an elected Director of the Coachella Valley Water District, first elected in 2014 and reelected in 2018. Our five-member board included three representatives that that served principally agricultural communities. And I actually served the most urbanized area. I was recruited to the board by the farmers who were friends of mine who I'd worked for separately. So the key there was the Coachella Valley Water District has been around for 100 years and recognizes the importance of affordable and reliable agricultural water. The reason I came on the Dudley Ridge Board is many-fold. First of all, I'm a public servant. I always have been and always will be, first and foremost. When I was seated to the Executive Director position of the Salt and Sea Authority, I had to resign my position on the Coachella Valley Water District Board. The Irvine Ranch Water District had a need for representation in this regard and they felt that my experience, I have a degree in construction. I have a background in banking and finance, sales and marketing, communications, public relations. I've done a lot of things, probably more than, more than I probably should have, but I've been busy and I've learned a lot along the way. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop right there and thank you for the opportunity to present myself for your consideration and invite any questions you might have. I'll also leave with the clerk my business card so that if anybody wants to reach out to me, ask me any questions or otherwise, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker card I have, there's some confusion with staff. Carlos Tafoya, are you here for unscheduled or for redistricting? If you want to come forward.
Good morning, everybody. As I mentioned, my name is Carlos Tafoya and the community-based organization that I work with, Valley Voices, recently collaborated with Adventist Health of Central California and the Diocese of Fresno to host a vaccine pop-up clinic at Immaculate Heart of Mary on June 11th. And we thought that was a great day being a Sunday because a lot of our farm workers have a difficult time going to clinics and going to pharmacies because of the hours. And so Sunday seemed like a very practical and suitable time. And as a result, I'm happy to share with the Board of Supervisors that we vaccinated 38 parishioners. And that was a really nice number, I thought. And churches being a trusted messenger, I think, was very helpful. On July 23rd, this past Friday, we were at our Mona on C Street over by the middle school and we were able to get 17 folks vaccinated, which was fantastic. And this Sunday, August 1st, we will again be at Immaculate Heart of Mary for the second dose of Pfizer for those that were vaccinated that on June 11th, as well as anybody else getting their first dose. And so we're expecting a pretty big number. I enjoy really listening to Mr. Hill when he discusses and shares the numbers that we have in the county. Some of those vaccine rates are very dismal. So we're doing the best we can to help with those numbers. We're going out to door-to-door, talking to folks and making phone calls and sometimes in 100-degree weather, but we want to make sure that nobody gets left behind. So I do invite members of the Board of Supervisors to come join us, August 1st at Immaculate Heart of Mary. It's a lot of people that we're expecting that day. So the more help we can get, the better. I think it was Helen Keller who said alone, we could do so little, together, we can do so much. So I think in collaboration, working together, we can have some really positive results for our county. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that we have. I do have Scott Hallwell online with his hand raised.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and those in attendance, Scott Hallwell, Kings County Veteran Services. Just wanted to remind, not necessarily bring to attention of the board and those in attendance and those online listening that this weekend coming up is Hanford's 130th anniversary celebration of being a city. As part of that celebration, the Rotary Club of Hanford will be making a presentation honoring veterans of Hanford present and those who have passed over the years. They're gonna be doing that at Civic Park at 12:30 on Saturday, the 31st. There will be an honor guard opening up. Someone, I believe, will be performing the, or singing the National Anthem. The Deputy Commander for Strike Fighter Wing Pacific, which is the Super Hornet Wing, will be there to speak. And also Captain Harry Zenzner is going to come and say a few words as well. So just wanted the board and those listening to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. That it.
That's all we have.
Okay, very good. Thank you. At this time, then we'll move to item three, which is approval of the minutes. We will start with item 3A, which is reporting out. So.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. On the record, your board on July 13th, 2021, directed staff to notify Carrie Woolley, Assistant County Council, that she was in charge of the County Council's office effective July 14th, 2021, until such time as a permanent county council is named. Pursuant to county personnel rules, I indicated that she would receive a temporary salary upgrade to reflect the appropriate compensation for the added responsibilities, which was set at $13,000 per month, the low end of the salary ban for the county council position. Subsequently, it was determined that pursuant to Government Code Section 27641, the county is required to have someone actually in the position of county council as opposed to an assistant in charge. Therefore, your board unanimously approved Carrie Woolley as being named interim county council in closed session on July 20th, 2021. Her salary upgrading remains unchanged at $13,000 per month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will move to item 3B, which is approval of the minutes from the July 20th, 2021 regular meeting, board with your pleasure.
I'll move second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. We'll move to item 4A, oh, excuse me, actually, item four, which is the consent calendar. And again, back to the board for action.
There enough for approval. Nev, seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by Fagundes, second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. We'll now move to item five, which is regular agenda items. And we'll start with administration and a report from last week from Mr. Bob Henry, I guess, right? See here this week?
He's on there today.
Yes, he is.
He is. In that little square box.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Report period recovers from April 13th through July 26th. We do have a few things to report out on. April 21st, we had an annual community meeting in Kettlemann City. KHF provided 2020 air and groundwater data, placards review, contingency plan review. KHF also reviewed the Kings County Family Emergency Preparedness Plan. On April 27th, DTSC reduced the status of alleged prior violation. What happened there is on March 29th, DTSC performed a compliance inspection or CEI, where on April 15th, during their off-site paperwork review, DTSC issued a Class II violation alleging that CWMI did not provide annual eight-hour hazwah for refresher training timely. And on April 22nd, after KHF provided additional information, DTSC downgraded the Class II violation to a minor violation. April 23rd, Kings County weighs the measures at KHF and scale certification. No areas concerned, no violations. April 28th, Kings County Environmental Health Services and Cal Recycle at KHF, this was Kings County, performed their monthly unannounced facility inspection and, or excuse me, and Cal Recycle performed their 18-month unannounced facility inspection. During the inspection, there were no areas of concerns and no violations. May 24th, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at KHF for their monthly unannounced facility inspection, where it's concerned, no violations. May 26th through 28th, we had DTSC at KHF. This was the annual groundwater operations and maintenance inspection. KHF received one area of concern for concrete well pads. So as wells come up out of the ground, we have a concrete pad around them and then we have a steel box that we put over the top to lock them. They did have a couple pads had some cracks in them that we needed to replace. We did receive violation for not using a flow meter for calculating the volume of purged water. We were doing it based on volume through a flow meter, so we had to switch. May 27th, Simpkins Valley Air Pollution Control District at KHF, this was the annual MSW flare test. No areas of concern and no violations. June 11th, DTSC part, NOD number four, notes of deficiency number four submittal. This is believed to be the final submittal. The next step for DTSC is to complete their technical review. The latest that I have is that decision may be made in May of 2023. So it's still out there fairly far. June 23rd, Kings County Fire Department at KHF, KHF requested assistance selecting firefighting equipment specifically to replace some of our fireboss unit. Kings County recommended two 150-pound dry chemical carts and a doctor for ATRF application. June 28th, Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection. No areas of concern, no violations. July 9th, we had Congressman David Valadello and Field Representative Clayton Smith at KHF provide the Congressman and Field Representative a facility overview and tour. We also discussed the lack of incineration capacity nationwide. There's 10 commercial incinerators nationwide and they're all operating at capacity. Incinerators are gonna be going down for their annual maintenance or repairs. It's usually three to four weeks during the summer months, which is exasperating. Also, the incinerator hubs, and these are company facilities that actually places like HF with some materials to the hub and then the hub would feed the incinerator to their capacity as well. What's happening is incineration waste is backing up the generator locations. Generator locations have 90 days to move the materials. We're seeing through some of our other facilities where some of the hospitals are starting to have problems getting their material. Right now, what we're doing is with our facility, we have permitted capacity on our drum storage unit for up to one year. But running into the materials that we've already accepted are getting close to that date. Right now, I'm sitting on something in September that I'm trying to move. We're working with DTSC and US EPA to try to extend that storage period so we can get over this, get over this hump and delay with the incinerators. So I'll keep you abreast of that next quarter. July 13th, Kings County Tax Auditors at KHF, we provided a facility overview and tour and identified specific pieces of equipment requested by the auditor. And then in July, we had Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at facility, monthly unannounced facility inspection, no areas of concerns, no violations. Future activities, we're working on our Title V's, that's your air permit renewal. So we'll be sending that in. And then also landfill unit B19, five-year traffic study. Our plans are, we're in B17 presently, is to move our B19. It has some remaining capacity. We'll exhaust that capacity and then go ahead and run to closure. While it's going on, we'll move back to 17. So we're gonna move from 17 to 19, back to 17. That'll be, we'll be moving to 19, middle of next year. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Someone has any questions?
Hey, very good. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Any questions from the board? At this point, then, this is an active item to accept the report. So.
I'll move the accept report and present it. Nev, seconds.
Very good. Motion by Verboen, second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
We have five in favor. Motion carries. We'll now move to item 5B, which is from the fire department.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me up again. Just recently, we found out about a grant in the city of Corcoran through the Corcoran Community District Hospital Board seeking medical supplies or medical needs in the Community Services District. The fire department, Mike Ornalis, he's up here with me. He found the grant and he did some research. And we decided to apply for the grant looking for two Lucas 3.1 chest compression systems. These are automatic CPR devices that take chest compressions out of the hand of the actual person. We did get awarded the grant. The grant is 100% paid. So with your approval today, the district will buy the two units and it comes with all the accessories and a four-year service contract and they'll pay 100% of that. I brought Captain Ornalis up here to talk to you guys a little bit about what this can do for us, the chest compression system.
Morning. So currently, the three firefighters assigned to the city of Corcoran respond to medical emergencies as well as fires. When we arrive on scene, we begin doing CPR on a person if they are unresponsive with no pulse. The physical activity of doing the CPR can become tiring for a first responder. And when the over 4,000 compressions that can be done from a responder for the response time from Corcoran to the hospital, over that time, the compressions become less accurate, less deep as the person becomes fatigued and tired. The machine doesn't become fatigued and tired. Because of that, there's over a 60% increase in blood flow to the brain from the machine doing the compressions. When a person is a viable patient and can be saved, becomes of a cardiac arrest, they have a 99% chance of having a good neurological outcome post their pulse symptoms. So it's a really win-win. Chief Cunningham has something to say about the responder availability also.
Yeah, so if we accept these devices, it's gonna help the fire department out a lot because when we do have a code and we have firefighters working, we assist the ambulance in transporting all the way to the hospital, which would be to Hanford. So currently, when we do that, we send one firefighter doing chest compressions, another firefighter bagging them. So that takes two firefighters out of the system, leaving the city of Corcoran covered with just one person. We want to try to get away from that. So these devices are a big need for us because when that call comes down, we can hook the device up and start running it. Then we just have the need to send one firefighter to do the ventilations. So it's actually gonna assist us in covering the rest of the citizens for the next call while they run to the hospital with just one firefighter and the device. The reason we're, we've asked for two from the district is that Station 4 in South Hanford, they're the cover unit to Corcoran. So our idea is that if we can get two of them when this does happen or there's a fire going on, South Hanford's the next one to cover. So it would put two devices into play so that we can try to serve the citizens of the Corcoran Community Hospital District better. So we're recommending that you accept the two Lucas 3.1 chest compression systems from the Corcoran District Hospital Board of Trustees to assist in providing life-saving cardio pulmonary resuscitation to the city of Corcoran residents. The impact is, there's no current impact to the County General Fund or the Fire Fund. The Corcoran District Hospital Board of Trustees will purchase the two chest compression systems, accessory equipment and a four-year service contract for $43,673 from Stryker Medical. Once the service contract meets the expiration date, the fire department will fund the maintenance and continue to utilize the equipment. The annual maintenance costs are approximately $1,400 per system. Are there any questions?
Do you have them right now?
We haven't moved to have them purchase them. We are gonna have them purchase them outright and donate the equipment. Um, we, we haven't moved to uh have them purchase them. We are going to have them purchase them outright and donate the equipment. Once we do that, we'll contact you guys upon your approval and we'll do a uh, a media uh
I volunteer, supervisor Peterson, for a demonstration here on the floor.
Um, actually, these came uh in light that the ambulance um purchased one and they have it in the city of Hanford and they have their supervisor carrying it. So they're dispatching it to any ten-minute response area for them to use and they've had a couple code saves by using them. They're really effective and make your back feel better when you watch them work.
I saw the video on how it works and it's amazing that, you know, they're able to do other things while the chest compression is going on, especially when you're by yourself.
Right.
You're about to talk on the phone, get people to come and uh do the air. So very good. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, we have I think we have a uh motion, but we do have uh another comment by Supervisor Valley. Go ahead.
Hey, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the question is, did the hospital district apply on behalf of the fire department um for monies outside the district's own budget? Were these funds directly out of the um, the hospital district's budget?
So we were approached by uh Captain Ornalis here knows some members of the community uh district hospital board and they're trying to do a outreach in Corcoran. In the, in the area that the, the district hospital is, is in, and they're doing an outreach. They're doing several other things. Uh, right now they're doing swim lessons for anyone in Corcoran that wants to learn CPR lessons for anyone who wants to uh to learn CPR. And so they're looking at the district on a whole and putting this money back in the community. So they approached us and asked us as far as the district's concerned, if we have any medical needs. Um, can, if they can assist us with it. So that's when Mike got with me and we started talking about it. We came up with these devices. Um, they can only stay inside the district. Uh, that's why we're, we're asking for two. We, we did include Station Four because they are the backup cover unit to the district. But I, I don't know if I answered your question, Supervisor Valley, but it's specific monies for just the district.
Yeah, I know what I was trying to figure out was um if the board applied for an outside grant or if they use their existing budget, because their existing budget comes from the taxpayers of Corcoran who are still paying on a bond. That was supposed to build a new hospital in Corcoran. So we know that whole old sad story when the hospital didn't get built. So my only point is if, if this is um uh funds used by the uh hospital board of trustees, then I want to also go on the record as thanking the taxpayers of Corcoran uh because, because again, our property taxes were raised to build a hospital and without that hospital being built there, it sounds like the hospital board is spending uh monies in other ways. Um, and I'm not here to criticize that for this. This is two good um life-saving uh blessings here. But if, but, but if in fact that's within their own budget, then we should also thank the um taxpayers of the city of Corcoran. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and I do believe that those, those monies aren't from an outside grant. It is from uh Corcoran District Hospital funds.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you for that and thank you for the uh, a nice presentation. And Mr. Chairman, I'm happy, there's not a second yet. I'm happy to um second supervisor Ben's motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll note that. And then from County Council, we have comment.
Uh, I just have two questions for you gentlemen. First, uh, you said that the machines would only be able to be used in the Corcoran District, the Corcoran Hospital District area?
That's, that's the idea by obtaining those for those district. That doesn't mean that if that engine's somewhere else, they'll be able to use them wherever we are called to, to give service. But the initial is that these two engines are the ones that support the citizens of Corcoran one hundred percent of the time. And so that's how we're able to get the grant for those two engines. But if they're sometimes they come to Hanford for training and somebody drops down and their pulse is numbering, that doesn't mean we're not going to use it because they're not in the city of Corcoran. We're going to use it wherever those engines go.
Okay. And do you know, will uh Corcoran District Hospital be asking us to sign an agreement? Yep. To accept these two machines?
Um, we are bringing you this to your board. When we applied for the grant, uh, the fire chief signed all the necessary documents. And um, it was a very simple application and um we signed it, they approved it. And so now that's why we're coming for a direction from you guys to accept it as a
Alright. Um, I would ask then that you, any motion include authorization for the fire chief to sign any agreement that would go along with acceptance of these compressions? Sorry, uh, compression system, chest compression systems.
Okay. Very good. So we do have a motion in a second. Uh, is that uh? Okay. Very good. Um, and just for the record, if I'm, if I'm trying that, if I'm trying that machine, then you get to try the taser, so. Even money. Bet I come out better.
Alright.
Alright, we have a uh motion in a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Barboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, we have five in favor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Alright. Let me get my bearings back here again. So uh, we will now move to item five C with the Sheriff's Department. We have Sheriff Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. So today we're coming back to your board. Um, for an agenda item that was previously discussed, when we purchased our last airplane, we discussed that we would then need to come back to your board to pay off one of the other airplanes so we could sell it. So working through County Council's office and specifically Carrie Woolley, she's helped us uh put this agenda item together. So even though it, it reads as purchase of another airplane, we're actually just buying out the lease option to buy for about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then we're immediately going to turn around and public surplus it and sell it. And, and so that would liquidate one of the um airplanes that we currently have on our fleet. And it also helps save us some money because then it also reduces our insurance costs to the county. Um, and this airplane actually is the highest insurance cost that we have out of the, out of the three. So today I'm here before your board to ask your board to approve, to purchase out the airplane that we currently have in the lease agreement and then turn around and sell that airplane through the public surplus auction that's been uh approved through County Council's office. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, questions from the board?
Moving present. Nev's will second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Barboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Hey, we have five in favor. Thank you. And goodbye to five-five-nine Kilo Charlie. Alright, we'll now move to item five D, which is from administration. Domingo, welcome.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Yeah, Domingo Cruz, one of your administrative analysts in the administrative office. So before I uh move on to this agenda item, the uh Chief probation officer, Kelly Vernon, would like to make a statement.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Kelly Vernon, Chief probation officer. I just want to take the opportunity to thank your board for all of your assistance in this um ever-so-long incoming agreement that we have here. Um, the opportunity to remodel the branch jail to make it our juvenile detention facility is very exciting to the probation department. We look forward to a, a facility that is appropriate to hold these young people accountable while providing them opportunity and some hope to get their life back together so that they don't overcrowd our jail at a later point in time. Um, again, I thank you. Um, part of this project will not just allow us to service those youth that are in custody, but through the day reporting center, we can also service families and youth of those that are no, that are not in custody. So um, again, I thank you. And this is going to be a very exciting project for probation in particular. So um, again, I appreciate your support all the way through this.
Thank you.
So wi- with that, uh, this morning again, I'm here to request that your board award the Senate Bill eighty-one projects notice, uh, notice to proceed to Bowie Contractors, Inc. Uh, approve the construction agreement with Bowie Contractors, Inc. Uh, authorize the public works director to approve change orders up to ten percent and approve the agreement amendment number two for Vanner Construction Management, Inc. For additional project management services during the construction phase. So it has been a long road for the county uh since the submission of the application to the Board of State and Credit Corrections, B S C C. Uh, to obtain a nine point six million lease revenue bond from the state to reconstruct and remodel the uh existing county branch jail into the new Kings County Juvenile Center. So the application was submitted by the county on December sixteen, two thousand fourteen. And a conditional award was received from B S C C on April ninth, two thousand fifteen. So we are now here today. We're very excited to move this project forward. So on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, your board awarded a bid for the county senate bill eighty-one round two. Juvenile Center remodel project, which is the S B eighty-one project to the apparent lowest bidder, uh Bowie Contractors, Inc. The uh State Department of Finance has approved the contract award on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, last Friday. Uh, which authorizes the county to send the notice to proceed to Bowie Contractors, Inc. And a construction agreement approved by your board is now needed to move the project forward. As presented on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-first uh board meeting, which your board adopted a budget resolution in order to proceed with construction financing. The total cost of the project is twenty million, hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars. So the, the cost of the project is included in the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, budget unit seven zero 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 three, K S, uh, K C S B eighty-one project. Account nine four one zero five, S B eighty-one project. So the state will provide nine million, six hundred thousand dollars for the project and the county is providing ten million, five hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Also, uh, Vanner Construction Management, Inc., Vanners Agreement Amendment Number Two uh will increase their original contract amount from four hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred twenty dollars to a total amount of six ninety-nine thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, a twenty-seven thousand dollars increase, which is also included in the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget uh under K C S B eighty-one project. So as the juvenile center project progressed, yeah, the project has met unexpected delays uh through the state's review and approval process. So due to this delay, the uh projection for the original proposal have increased uh since the original proposal submission in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, therefore requiring additional uh project management services during the construction phase. So the estimated start of construction today uh was today, uh, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. But we are giving Bowie Contractors, Inc. seven days to mobilize its crew and equipment. So the actual start of the construction activities is next week's Tuesday, uh, August third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, per the construction agreement section three point one, uh, the date of commencement shall be ten calendar days after the mailing of written notice to proceed, which we're going to do today. But of course, you know, they were eager to, as well as the county's project team, to start the construction. The estimated completion date is October twenty, twenty twenty-two for a fifteen-month construction schedule. And the anticipated occupancy date uh is January eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I believe Bowie Contractors, Inc. uh may be on the line. And also a Vanner Construction Management representative is in the boardroom today, if you have any questions at all.
Very good. That it?
Any representative from the Bowie Contractors online?
Yes, hi. Jerry Genocchio, I'm vice president with Bowie Contractors. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, we're very excited to be part of the team here. One of the reasons we enjoy Public Works is getting, having the ability to serve the citizens of the state of California in projects that they greatly need. This is certainly one of those and we're very proud to be part of the team and will do our best to deliver you uh an outstanding product.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, with, with that, uh, I respectfully request that your board award the Senate Bill eighty-one projects notice to proceed to Bowie Contractors, Inc. Approve the construction agreement with Bowie Contractors, Inc. And authorize the public works director to approve change orders up to ten percent and approve the agreement amendment number two for Vanner Construction Management, Inc. for additional project management services during the construction phase. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dominic, Domingo.
Got it.
Right.
Nev seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by Fagundes, uh, second by Nev's. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Barboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, next up, we'll move to item five E. It's just from uh public health and uh Director Ed Hill, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, Public Health. I'm going to start my report as I always do by reminding everyone the simple steps we can take to protect ourselves from COVID nineteen and other communicable disease, which are uh frequently wash your hands for twenty seconds or more, keep your unwashed hands away from your face, stay hydrated with water. A hydrated cell is a healthy cell. Uh, stay home if you're sick and then implement all the tools in your toolbox to help protect yourselves and loved ones from the virus. My update is going to be brief today. Our numbers are available on our website. We continue to watch hospital data closely. Regionally, hospital admissions and med surge and both I C, or excuse me, med surge, general admissions and ICU continue to increase slightly. Admissions at our local hospital uh remain variable, but we still do see a trend increasing. Uh, we currently have seventeen in med surge and one patient in the ICU. Of those admitted, thirteen are Kings County residents. And then as a reminder, these hospitals work on a regional basis, so they admit uh patients from everywhere throughout the state. Uh, since July first, unvaccinated COVID patients accounted for eighty-eight point eighty-nine percent of those in uh the hospital. So once again, a reminder that vaccines are important and continue to get vaccinated. Our P P E status has not changed and we are still maintaining a sixty-day supply of P P E for all of our healthcare facilities. The mobile testing program site schedules on our website. Uh, and again, due to weather changes, we have modified that schedule, so keep uh checking that for updates. In addition to that, we have added testing to all of our local clinics, so individuals can either go to the mobile site or they can go straight to one of our public health clinics. Uh, we do continue to see an increase in cases. Last week, we had two hundred and ten cases, bringing our new case count over the past two weeks to three hundred and twenty-two. Uh, we are still encountering individuals who are resistant to providing details outside of household contacts. They have begun to tell us that they are going to events, but they won't share us details of those events or who they have in contact, which again hinders or hinders the contact investigation in case our contact tracing process. Uh, the most significant increase in cases are in the twelve to fifteen and twenty to forty-nine population. Uh, those are the individuals, especially the twenty to forty-nine, that usually uh engage in more risky behaviors and get out to larger gatherings. And that's where we are seeing the increase. Our Delta variant case count has not changed and it remains at nine. Uh, this is likely due to the delay in response from the state lab. There are quite a few samples behind on getting those processed, so we do anticipate that number increasing. Uh, the variant does continue to spread and currently there are three thousand, three hundred and forty-two cases of the Delta variant in California. On Monday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, yesterday, the state issued a new health officer order. The order requires vaccine verification, masking and testing requirements for unvaccinated in applicable healthcare settings. They created three different categories. Those are acute healthcare settings and long-term care settings like general acute care hospitals, skilled nursing facilities and intermediate care facilities. These facilities must verify vaccine status by either a vaccine card or an E-card. Uh, unvaccinated staff must also wear masks and test twice weekly moving forward. High-risk congreg- or congreg- settings such as adult senior resident facilities, homeless shelters and jails and other healthcare settings such as clinics, uh, doctors' offices, things along those lines, which public health falls under. Uh, they too also have to im- implement vaccine verification systems. That staff that are unvaccinated must wear masks and they only have to be tested once a week, but it is a requirement. The requirement goes into effect August ninth and we have to be fully compliant with the process by August twenty-third. So public health are making the, the necessary adjustments and I'm communicating with uh Public Works here because they have staff that move throughout those facilities uh as well as uh the jail and probation. On the vaccine update, I want to thank Valley Voices for their vaccine efforts and assisting us with outreach. We are continuing to expand those relationships with our CBOs to include contact tracing and case investigation, which will be helpful moving forward. We're looking forward to those partnerships. Last week, public health administered two hundred and fourteen vaccines. We haven't been in the two hundred in almost a month, so it's good to see that the vaccine numbers are increasing. Uh, and again, I want to remind everybody, that's just public health. There's plenty of organizations that offer vaccines, Adventist Health, Rite Aid, C V S, things along those lines. We continue to have plenty of vaccine appointments. We continue to have plenty of vaccine appointments available. Just a reminder, we can do up to seven hundred vaccines a week just by Public Health ourselves and we've started to offer all the vaccines at every clinic, the J and J, the Pfizer and the uh, Moderna. Uh, also on a positive note, we had an increase in vaccine event requests. So far, we've got eleven new pop-up requests for next week, or excuse me, next month, which is a good sign. Uh, those will happen at churches, college registration events, food distribution sites, farmers markets, things along those lines. And again, we're not the only ones doing that. We also have the opportunity to bring in the state if those vaccine requests get to be too numerous or our staff can't handle it. So that is a good sign. On uh, so far, excuse me, uh, Kings County providers have administered ninety one thousand, three hundred and one vaccines to county residents. And on May fourteenth, we started vaccinating the twelve to fifteen population. So far, we have vaccinated three thousand, one hundred and ninety nine or provided three hundred, three thousand, one hundred and ninety nine doses to that population. We're still working with the state to correct their data reporting issue that I reported to you several weeks ago related to the CDCR facilities and the inmates, uh, how they're including them in the the available or the eligible population, but not in the numerator, so it's driving our vaccine numbers down. If we include those in our vaccine numbers, our vaccine percentage increases to thirty eight percent now. Again, it's still low, but it it's better than what's being reported. Our current breakthrough rate is at uh, point two percent, so that's two tenths of a percent of our vaccinated population. Last week, Supervisor Valley requested that I include numbers on which vaccines and what their percentage of breakthroughs are. Uh, the Johnson and Johnson, they're at three percent breakthrough. The Moderna is at two percent breakthrough and the Pfizer is at two percent breakthrough. So well within the efficacy rates established by the CDC and all the manufacturers. So again, once again, solid proof that the vaccine is working. So the takeaway for today's meeting is just as it was last week. The virus isn't going anywhere anytime soon. We do expect our cases to continue to increase. Uh, and uh, we again encourage everybody implement the practices and the tools that they have at their availability to protect themselves and loved ones. Uh, that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hill, questions from the board, Supervisor Verboom?
So is there any uh, you know how long the vaccine will last in our system? We gotta get rebacked in once a year or will it last that long? You know, yep?
So the science on the the booster requirement is still out, but right now it's looking pretty good for long term uh, vaccine, or excuse me, uh, immunity coverage. Uh, but again, time will tell and we're waiting on more news from the FDA and CDC.
We got other questions?
Chairman?
Yep, Supervisor Ralph.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Hill, I know the number is on the website, but just for the uh, the public and and the and and as far as our information now, um, I know you organize the percentages of uh, the vaccine, the vaccination uh, percentages around the county and some communities were doing uh, pretty well and some were still doing uh, very bad. But can, do you mind just popping those numbers up real quick, giving the board a quick uh, a roundabout on that?
Unfortunately, I'm in the chamber today. I don't have those exact percentages in front of me. Um, I do, I have completed a map at your request that is on our website. Uh, I'm gonna quickly pull that up if the board will indulge me for one moment. So we created a a map on our website under vaccine information that has all the zip codes because that's how the state tracks vaccine uh, distribution throughout the county. Uh, and on that map, these are individuals, or excuse me, uh, counts of folks who have at least received one dose. Uh, the Avonall area is at forty three percent, so I need to once again be clear here. This is not fully vaccinated. These are individuals that have received at least one dose. The area of between uh, or the zip code of nine, three, two, two, three, nine, the Kettelman City area, the percentage of vaccine is sixty two percent. For the Stratford area or nine, three, two, two, six, six, it's at sixty nine percent. For nine, three, two, four, five, that's the more, the vaccine percentage is at thirty nine percent. For Hanford, uh, nine, three, two, two, three, zero, it's at fifty percent. And for Armona area, nine, three, two, two, oh, two, it's at forty three percent. And at Corcoran, uh, at nine, three, two, two, one, two, is at twenty four percent. So still a lot of work to do there because again, that's not fully vaccinated. That's just individuals that have received at least one dose.
Yes, sir. No, thank, thank you for doing that. Um, thanks for getting that map up, uh, too. Uh, that being said, Mr. Hill, um, you you know, looking at um, some of the small uh, rural communities like Stratford and Kettelman, um, those, those are nice percentages, good, good job there. Uh, Hanford is looking good. Um, what, when you look at Corcoran and that twenty four percent, um, and and these pop-ups that 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 are being requested now, can can you please let me know if any of those are in Corcoran and Ocelot is, as we spoke about, um, um, uh, one, thank you for keeping me informed, but two, please, uh, uh, let's turn it up in another notch, a couple of notches, because we have, we really gotta get this Corcoran uh, percentage up. There, there is, there are concerns being brought to my attention uh, by residents of Corcoran and of course, they're coming from the vaccinated. And um, you know, at this point, all I can tell them is that it's not for lack of effort. Uh, uh, especially on on your behalf and 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 the tireless efforts of your uh, health department staff, uh, Mr. Hill. Um, and uh, and I know we got the vaccine out there. We got the vaccine out early. It's readily available. Um, so so it's hard to respond when, when you have concerns coming from the community on um, uh, you know, why is Corcoran so low? So I, that being said, uh, I feel as a representative, I still owe some kind of answer. Uh, we as a county still owe some kind of answer and still continue to owe um, effort uh, to raise these levels up, uh, and not just in Corcoran, uh, but countywide. But again, I am happy with with some of these numbers, especially in the small uh, rural, rural communities. And so a good job of Stratford leading the way at sixty nine percent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor Valley, through the chair. I did send you an email this morning of all the events that are scheduled for Corcoran. Um, we're pretty excited about some of those. Uh, one of them is a three day long event, so we're looking for a good number though on that timeframe.
Thank you, sir. I haven't seen that yet. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions from the board?
Ms. Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Larry Spikes, County Administrative Officer. I guess I haven't been identifying myself with people that can't see, so I'm gonna try to do that. Um, just wanted to bring your boards, to your board's attention that as of yesterday, here amongst the King County, Kings County employees, we do have fourteen confirmed cases and four pending with symptoms. So I think that obviously our, our message needs to continue to be, take whatever precautions you deem necessary to make sure you protect yourself if you're not vaccinated. Perhaps you should wear a mask. We're not requiring it at this point, but that needs to be brought to everybody's attention. And also keep the numbers of groups together at smaller numbers perhaps than we've been seeing. I think a lot of people have been acting as if we can just proceed with everything as normal, which I think most of us that have been vaccinated, I think we can do that, but at the same time, if we have a number that are not, we need to probably be aware of getting together in large groups. That can be a a method of spreading it. So anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention. We'll continue to monitor that and obviously, week to week, as if something comes up and it becomes more of an issue, then we'll discuss options with your board, but that's what we have at the present time.
Very good. Thank you. And with that, just one last rush. Now for the questions from the board. All right. Thank you. Uh, we do have roughly uh, four minutes. Would you like to uh, short recess or go to, yeah, that was okay? So uh, we do have a uh, ten PM uh, public hearing on uh, redistricting. So at this time, we will uh, take a short three minute recess and then uh, reconvene at ten o'clock. All right. It's uh, ten oh one. We're back uh, in session. At this time, we do have a uh, public hearing scheduled for uh, redistricting. So at this time, I will uh, turn it over to our uh, Deputy uh, County CAO, Miss Keria Martinez.
Good morning, members of the public, Board Supervisors, County Council, CAO. Keria Martinez, Assistant County Administrative Officer here today to introduce the second redistricting uh, for public hearing. This public hearing is in person and is also being broadcasted via WebEx and YouTube teleconference scene format. If you would like to make a public comment through the teleconference format today, please make sure that you're identified by name in the WebEx system. Also, please mute yourself until the time has come to speak. If you are joining us via YouTube, you cannot make public comment and can only make public comment through WebEx. If you wish to speak during the public hearing, please use the raise your hand in your WebEx feature on the far right of your name when the public hearing is open for comments. Please wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to five minutes for comment. If you can, cannot uh, access the raise your hand feature, please physically raise your hand on the screen and we will call on you at the time of the public comment. We do have a Spanish live translator in the building and we'll be broadcasting the Spanish version of this hearing via Spanish WebEx YouTube links. If you're currently in our board chambers and are in need of a translator, please raise your hand. Materials being presented at today's hearing are available at our website, redistrictkings.com. At this time, I will introduce the item before you. Every ten years, the county supervisor districts must be redrawn so that each district is equal in population. This process is called redistricting. And it is important in ensuring that each supervisor represents approximately the same number of constituents. Redistricting determines which neighborhoods, neighborhoods and communities are grouped together into a supervisorial district for the purpose of electing a board member. The Board of Supervisors will seek input in selecting the next district map for supervisor districts. You have an opportunity to share with the board how you think district boundaries should be drawn and best represent your community. The county is required as part of its twenty twenty one redistricting process to hold a minimum of four public hearings to engage the public. Today, we are hosting the second public hearing. The first public hearing was held last Tuesday, July twentieth. Members of the community have been encouraged to participate. Notice of today's public hearing was published on the county's website, redistrictkings.com. The county has also contracted with Tripeppy Smith, a public relations agency, to lead the outreach efforts. These efforts are court, also being coordinated with the lead county departments, county administration and county council. Today's meeting was promoted online through our social media accounts created specifically for redistricting, which include Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. Links to these accounts can be found at the redistrictkings.com website. A flyer was posted online and distributed to local community-based organizations via email. Tripeppy further contacted the community-based organizations and asked if they'd be willing to join a mailing list specifically for Kings County redistricting. A public hearing notice was also published in the Hanford Sentinel on July twenty fourth. Upon conclusion of the hearing, the county will make available online recordings or written summaries of the public hearing. At this time, I will transition the presentation to Jeff Tilton, who is from National Demographics Corporation, the consultant who's leading the redistricting process on the behalf of the county. Jeff?
Good morning. Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Uh, here we are, uh, the second of what is now at least five public hearings with respect to redistricting, uh, the county of Kings and as Board Supervisors. Uh, we have added this, this uh, public hearing today as part of the initial public hearings. The the next public hearing after this one will be August thirty first. The intention is to educate uh, individuals about the process and also solicit input on communities and neighborhoods in the county. As I mentioned last week, there's been a delay with the census release due to the pandemic. Uh, that's by DC. Part of it, uh, we hope to get uh, those data into state in mid to late August. And California will take those data and make adjustments based on prisoners who are in uh, the California prison, state prisons. Whereas uh, wherever those inmates reside, they, they will be picked us up in, in the numbers of jurisdictions that they previously lived. Between then and November, we're gonna ask individuals to submit, we'd love to have the individuals participating in this process.
Jeff? Jeff?
Yes.
We're having some audio issues. It's cutting in and out. The last uh, few sentences, we couldn't hear you clearly. Could you repeat yourself?
Okay. So the uh, the census data, I'm picking up a lot of background noise of in the chambers, but the census data uh, will be adjusted in mid, excuse me, in late September, early October to where we will have precise data as it relates to um, the demographics of the county of Kings. On November third, the Board of Supervisors will see draft maps that have been submitted up to October twentieth. Those draft maps will be posted. Those draft maps will be posted to the county's website before or at October twenty seventh at five P M. And they must be up seven days before the public hearing. And that particular public hearing, we're asking supervisors to prepare down the draft maps. And with the hopes of moving two or three forward for the December seventh public hearing, folks can still submit maps, but we're trying to tear it down so we don't have a bunch of maps for that December seventh public hearing. And the final deadline on December fourteenth. The deadline to finish all this is December fifteenth. It's part of the redistricting process, we must follow federal guidelines and California guidelines.
Jeff?
Yes.
You're cutting out again, we were just wondering if you can log out and log back in, perhaps that'll fix the bandwidth and your audio would be much clearer.
Well, hopefully you can hear me better.
Let's, let's try it.
Go ahead, Jeff. If you want to share your screen.
I'm in the beautiful city of Manteca, so maybe they have to upgrade their internet service there. That's where I grew up. Okay, we were talking about the rules and goals of redistricting. We must follow federal laws and the California criteria for counties under bare maps. Under federal laws, we must have equal population in each of the districts. We must follow the Voting Rights Act, and there could be no racial discrimination. Then we shift to California criteria for counties. The districts must be geographically contiguous, and it must go in this particular order. We cannot divide neighborhoods or communities of interest. We have to represent, excuse me, respect the cities in the county and the census designated places when we're looking at traffic maps. We need to have easily identifiable boundaries such as major road, canal, etc. And the districts must be compact, they can't reach out into another district just to grab a technical for purposes of equal population density in favor of certain political parties.
Jeff?
So a big part of our work between now and the November public hearing.
Mr. Tilton?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
It's still cutting out. You know, another alternative, another alternative is if we can have you actually dial in through the Webex phone number that was included in the invite, that would give you a clear direct line to the Webex system instead of actually using your audio through your laptop, you'd just have to reduce the volume on your laptop when you speak. If members of the public can give us a few minutes to set up Jeff Tilton's call in. Thank you.
This is Jeff, hopefully you can hear me better.
Yes, Jeff, we can hear you perfect.
Great.
Go ahead.
So a big part of our work between now and the November meeting is to help define, help us define neighborhoods and communities of interest in the county. And so what are some of those areas that folks could easily recognize as we look to draft maps? We're also looking at communities of interest. Are there shared areas or, excuse me, are there areas where there are shared issues or characteristics such as, is there a concentration of perhaps renters or is there a concentration of folks with similar language spoken in the home? Those types of things. We don't want to divide those particular communities of interest when we're looking at drafting maps. So we're actually, we're actually asking individuals, what is your community and what is, and what is your neighborhood as well? We'd love for them to submit those, those ideas to the county as part of the website, on part of the outreach. And so that'll help define and inform those of us who are going to draft maps. Communities of interest may not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. Some of the possible neighborhoods, as I shared last week, you can look at essentially like general plan maps or the current district maps that we have for the board supervisors. We would love to fill this particular slide with comments from the community as to what is their respective communities of interest and neighborhoods. The county is going to use some mapping tools, but regardless of the mapping tool that, that are here, individuals can draw a map on a napkin and we will do our best to represent that as a draft before the board of supervisors in November or even December. So we have a simple map review tool, and that's once draft maps are developed, we will take those draft maps and put it on this review tool that will be accessible twenty four seven through the internet. And then they could take these maps and they can look at them one at a time, or they can layer them to see the differences. There's also a paper tool where folks could actually color in particular population units and take the number in those population units, add them up to, to a desired equal population for those, the districts that they are recommending. Similarly, Kings County, these are just representations from Lake Forest, but Kings County will have its own paper versions and an Excel sheet that is associated with the map I just showed you, but instead of the population numbers, it'll have an identification number in those population units. And you take that identification number and you drop it into an Excel sheet and all the data are formulated for the individual who would like to submit a draft map. Then we have District R, and I, I believe that this is live now for Kings County, so if one went to District R and under the state of California and selected counties, they should see Kings County and they could actually start drawing districts right now and submitting those as draft maps. It'll populate the total, the, the equal populated, or excuse me, it'll, it'll populate the population in each district that the author is trying to create. It's, it's really neat. And then they could, they can add more or they could subtract, subtract more with, you have a little paintbrush here and they can subtract with the little eraser. So it's pretty intuitive, but it does require internet and is only available in English. The next tool that is coming any day now is MapTitude. It's requires a lot of patience, it requires a little bit more skill, but with the patience, the, the skills, skillset will improve. It is available in six languages and it's a really great, great tool. It'll really break down all of the demographic data as well as, as individuals play through this. We want individuals to be part of the process, a huge part of the process, so they can participate by phoning or emailing, and they can also find a wealth of information on redistrictkings.com. There's also a slew of social media channels that they can stay connected with as well. So with this, with respect to the public hearing, when the, when it's called, we would like to get information on basically the, the first two questions and we'll be happy to answer questions on the mapping tools. On that bottom part, we're really not looking for action, we're looking for the board of supervisors to identify. It doesn't necessarily require a vote and, but so I'll clean that up on the next PowerPoint presentation, but really would like to have the board supervisors to identify the neighborhoods and communities of interest. With that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board supervisors before you open the public hearing.
Hi. Karia, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, very good. Questions, questions from the board?
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Riley.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, could he, could he go back? He wrapped up that last thirty seconds kind of quickly because it was actually a question that I already have written down as it relates to the next public hearing, August thirty first, where, where it says discussion then action and on vote on areas that meet each definition of neighborhoods or community of interest. Could, could he just go in a little bit more detail on that?
Sure. What, what we need is for the board supervisors to identify the neighborhood and, and the communities of interest that will help with respect to the board's action when it comes to approving the map. And you must be able to identify not only with equal population, but, and the fair map stack criteria that I listed before, but you're going to have to be able to, excuse me, identify the neighborhoods and communities of interest that you used to take into consideration.
Okay, does that lock, does that lock the board into any direction with the decision on August thirty first?
You can still change it, we can go all the way up to November. Yeah, it's, that's why I'm trying to remove that language, it's misleading, but it's something to keep a fine supervisor.
Okay, well, we definitely don't want to be any, any more misleading. That, that's because, because you're throwing me off too. So I appreciate if you can clean up that language and, you know, be very clear about that. The sec, the second thing is, one, thank you for the presentation, I do appreciate your time. The second thing is, when, when you, you, you've hit it a couple of times on equal population, is there a percentage, sir, up or down, where there's a little leeway on the districts?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there is. The Supreme Court has stated that under ten percent would be acceptable, and that's ten percent throughout the five districts, ten percent, less than ten percent deviation. And a lot of times that's done because, I mean, you're not going to do this again for ten years, but you might, you might know a planned growth. And so you might want to perhaps underpopulate a district now, knowing that it's going to grow in the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm good, I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you. Further questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we will move to open the public hearing and we'll turn it to the clerk to provide some outlines on how we'll proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, Catherine Ventrelli, clerk to the board. Staff will read all correspondence received for the seven twenty, twenty twenty one public hearing and up until eight thirty this morning. There are six letters and the board has received copies of the letters. They also will become part of the permanent record. Received from Mary Gonzalez Gomez. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Mary Gonzalez Gomez, I am a resident of Corcoran and I speak today about redistricting.
Question, because I don't want to, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but we went through this last week. Mary is on, on camera and she's already spent time during the week letting the clerk and Mr. Spikes know that she wished to make her own public comment, Mr. Chairman.
So, okay, so last week, we were requested to file and, and provide those comments. So I think we need to be clear on what we want in this process and, and, but Mr. Spikes, if you would.
Well, I was just going to suggest perhaps if she would just please wait until we do read the previous comments into the record and then she can also then expand if she'd like on what she's already submitted in writing for us to put in the record. I think that that's going to be consistently what we're trying to do is make sure that we do read into the record anything that we've previously received prior to the public hearing. And if she'd like to even do it again or, or, you know, expand on that, that's perfectly fine with her to proceed with that in that way.
Hey, Mr. Spike, so could you be clear, just so we meet the chairman's request to be consistent? She was on last week, there, there's, the confusion is not on her part. She submitted to make a public comment, no one recognized her, we talked at length about her for about ten minutes and the host situation, she still didn't get picked up on. And so this is, this isn't being inconsistent, she want, she want, she didn't want a written comment, she wanted to speak for herself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, and again, just to follow up on what Mr. Spikes explained, she made, you know, provided the comment from last week written, so we will read all comments or into the, the record that were provided last week and get caught up. And then it will be deemed as a new process at this current meeting and, and she will be allowed to, to make her comments limited to five minutes. And so with that, ma'am clerk, would you please continue?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, my name is Mary Gonzalez Gomez, I'm a resident of Corcoran and I speak today about redistricting in Kings County. Real concerns have surfaced in our communities and that redistricting may affect changes with our current representative, Kings County Board Supervisor, Richard Valley. His commitment, his hard work, and his tenacity has brought about tremendous positive changes within his district that have impacted our communities. Supervisor Valley is well-connected to the communities of Avonel, the community of Kettleman City, the Home Garden Community, and the community of Corcoran. These rural communities which he currently represents have come to trust and depend on his regular media messages, his transparency, his visibility throughout the district, throughout his district, and his availability to his constituents. To redistrict and relocate this and other Kings County board supervisors may create not only a huge disruption, but destroy the connection between a county supervisor that has a real connection to his district. A letter from Anthony V. Lopez. I want to formally request a public hearing to be held here in Avonel in the late afternoon before the final vote is made. Please give Avonel residents an opportunity to personally give their comments or ideas because most will not participate online.
This is Karia Martinez, we received an email through our redistricting email address, it was in Spanish, and I just, for the record, want to read it in Spanish and then I will translate it in English. The email is from Ignacio Ordalas. He states, yo quiero que siga igual así como estamos. Translate it into English, I want things to stay as we are.
Received from Todd at Kings Gun Center. In watching the presentation, California law states the districts must be simple and even, no special fingers or lines that are geopolitical or race-based. The Dolores Huerta Foundation is a racially motivated and manipulative organization that must be handled. My recommendation is to make districts as evenly geographically possible regardless of social and racial boundaries. The Kern County lawsuit caused Huerta to gerrymander the district to The Kern County lawsuit caused Huerta to gerrymander the district to make a lopsided district, preventing many of its constituents to have a voice. The district was a direct violation of the law after it was made, violating the simple clause and the geopolitical clause. Do not let the special interest groups make racial divided districts, which is bad for everyone in the county. Received from Riley Jones.
Can you, can you say the last name? You didn't, you didn't say the last name on that.
Todd at Kings Gun Center. The last one, Todd from Kings Gun Center.
It's, was it signed?
Todd Carter, President of Kings Gun Center.
Thank you.
And the next from Riley Jones. Is it possible to, is, is it possible the county needs a county council ruling on the requirement given public hearing speakers to give their name and address? This is also an unwritten rule for the planning commission. The request to not state their name and address by two speakers today who both said they would provide that information to the clerk following the meeting. And received from Valley Voices. Dear Kings County Board of Supervisors, I am writing on behalf of Valley Voices, a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization established to increase civil, to increase civic engagement and voter education throughout Kings County. In this endeavor, we are committed to ensuring that districts have population balance and are redrawn to accurately reflect the interests of all residents of our community and are created in such a manner so as to comply with the Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act and the Fair Maps Act. Valley Voices would like to thank you for commencing the public hearing portion of the Kings County redistricting process last Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, in the Board of Supervisors chambers and online via the WebEx portal. We are concerned, however, with several inconsistencies that have, have occurred in relation to this public hearing, thus raising concerns and confidence as to the integrity as we move forward. The items addressed at the hearing related to website and email inaccuracies, as pointed out by Supervisor Valli, are shocking given the team of 23 communicator experts, robust enough to offer experienced and effective professionals for the job, yet small enough to be nimble and responsive, as stated in the Tri-Peppi Smith proposal presented to the Board of Supervisors prior to giving them a $40,000 contract. In addition to the missteps mentioned above, there were several issues that shamefully hindered public access to last Tuesday's public hearing. Specifically, the general public was compelled to give their name and contact information prior to the doors of the Board of Supervisor Chamber being unlocked for entry. Public meetings should be open to the public. Online Spanish interpretation was offered as a whispered translation and often not understandable due to the main English audio also being captured.
That's the end of the letters that we had to read into the record. And I do have two public speaker cards. The first person I have is Ron Bates. I don't, oh, there he is.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I got to be first, okay.
Alphabetically.
May, maybe so, Joe. Name is Ron Bates. I was born in Hanford. I grew up in Armona. Highway 198 then was a two-lane road that went right by my house. I attended the opening of the naval base out here you all are so familiar with. I was there the day they let the public come in and see what it was about, 1961. I taught school in Avonel and on the Navy Base. And I've seen a lot of changes in Kings County. I'm here today to ask you gentlemen to ensure that the changes you put in place will ensure the voting rights of every citizen in the county. One way to ensure these rights would be to have meetings after the typical workday. Most people, if they are lucky enough to have a job in these trying times, have to work at 9:00 a.m. So there's not, not much, not much of a chance for those folks to, to be able to attend. If you do something in the evening or on a, you know, weekday, weekends don't really help because people who are working in those positions are working weekends probably. So something at night, I think, would help your constituents to be able to take part better. To an, I'd, I'd like to see you ensure a district supervisor for communities with similar income and race and geography. The community south of Highway 198 appears to have parts of three different districts. So they have, those folks have to convince three different supervisors of their needs instead of one. Then you run into the opposite situation. The city of Hanford, does it really need four supervisors? Another would be communication in Spanish, which you're, you're hearing all the time. This is another major language in our community. And there, there are people out there who want to vote, but they're not getting information. So including in advertising, social media, public notice comments, community events, phone contacts and regular old mail. Add that to, to the list or figure out some way to, to make sure that people, everybody can get the information. We've lost recently the Voters' Rights Act of 1965. We should not need a Voters' Rights Act to ensure the rights of all citizens in this county. You all are the head of this. You all can decide if people have a, have their rights and their rights are usable and of value and that make a difference. Hold accountable these people that you've hired to help you with this. Today's presentation from the NDC, whatever they're called, was also unhelpful to say, at the least. I'll stop there. I think I pretty much said, oh, the one last thing. Nothing has been mentioned today that this is a repeat meeting that is to make up for number one, the first meeting. And it looks from the, from what I've seen on the screens and everything, that it's not been acknowledged that there still should be another meeting involved in this because this is the same as one. Even though you're here twice, last week's meeting was considered invalid because of the foul ups. So this should be counted as one. So therefore, we need to, to see that there's scheduling, there's something that's being done to get in that other meeting that we in effect lost. I thank you for your time. You're always gentlemen and I appreciate that. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
The next speaker I have is Claire Fidiassi.
Good morning, Claire Fidiassi of Hanford. First, I want to acknowledge that the, when the clerks announced that translation was available in Spanish, she didn't announce that in Spanish. So anybody that does not understand English would not understand that there was an option for that. And also some folks that are listening in through WebEx are hearing English carryover. So the translator must have audio coming through her computer rather through, than through a headset. So it is still not a clear translation. I would like to continue reading the letter from Valley Voices. Only the first page was read. So on bullet points, translation in Spanish did not include all the information that we shared in English. Visuals that were presented during last week's meeting were shown only in English, not in Spanish, including the online option. The Board of Supervisors General Meeting had no explanation of the Spanish translation starting at 10:00 a.m. For those individuals who joined prior to the public hearing start time. With no explanation of what to expect, some Spanish speakers could potentially disengage before the meeting begins. American Sign Language interpretation for hearing impaired in the community was not offered. Documents presented were not offered in high contrast for the vision impaired or the colorblind. And, okay. So in an effort to facilitate the best possible community input for the county's redistricting efforts, Valley Voices requests that the Kings County Board of Supervisors offer interactive maps that can function as a lookup tool to facilitate the best community input for these redistricting efforts, similar to the option which Tulare County is offering to its residents. And in the letter, we have a link. It's called Find My District. Although it's stated in the redistricting website that an interactive review map is coming soon, we believe it should become a top priority and be made available within a week as the PDF currently available on the Board of Supervisors website does not allow residents to quickly or easily identify which district they currently reside in. We also request that as the process moves forward, the interactive map included download function of current and all proposed boundaries, communities of interest, geographies as shape files or geo databases, and are to include for each the equivalency blocks spreadsheet. We also request that all communities of interest, geographies, which are points and polygons identified by the public, be included within 24 hours of being submitted to interactive website for the entire community to review. We request the public hearings be held in several of the Kings County communities, such as Armona, Avonel, Corcoran, Kettleman City and Stratford, so as to allow residents in these communities ample opportunity to provide public comments. We believe that these public hearings should not be, come at an additional cost to taxpayers and should be included as part of the terms and conditions of NDC's and Tri-Peppi's original contracted services as the Fair Map Act requires cities and counties to engage communities in the redistricting process by holding public hearings and/or workshops and engaging public outreach, including to non-English speaking communities. These public meetings should be held after business work hours so as to accommodate those that work during the day and are unable to attend the public hearing scheduled during the Board of Supervisors regular Tuesday morning meetings. We believe scheduling only one public hearing at 6:30 p.m. limits the working community's ability to, ability to participate in the redistricting conversation. That's all I got for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the last speaker card online. We do have Mary Gonzalez Gomez, if she'd like to speak. I think she is muted.
We still can't hear you, Ms. Gomez. Ms., Ms. Gomez, we, we can't hear you. I don't know if you're muted, if you can hear us.
Mr. Chairman, can we have the clerk give her the call in line?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, all I can say is praise God. Good morning, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My initial hope was to read my letter. So thank you for the opportunity. My name is Mary Gonzalez Gomez and I am a resident of Corcoran and I was born and raised in Corcoran. And as a member of that community and a resident of Kings County, I speak to you today on redistricting here in Kings County. Real concerns have surfaced in our communities in that redistricting may affect changes with our current representative Kings County Board of Supervisor, Mr. Richard Vaia. His commitment, his hard work and his tenacity has brought about tremendous, and I say tremendous, positive and much-needed changes within his district that have clearly impacted our communities. Supervisor Vaia is a well-connected, is well-connected to the communities of Avonel, the community of Kettleman City, the Home Garden Community and the community of Corcoran. These rural communities which he currently represents have come to trust him and to depend on him. His regular media messages provide his district with current information and awareness on what is going on throughout Kings County. Furthermore, Supervisor Vaia's transparency, Supervisor Vaia's visibility throughout his district and his availability to his constituents is welcomed, very welcomed by our communities. And we believe that to redistrict and relocate, this Kings County Board of Supervisor may create not only a huge disruption, but may ultimately destroy the existing connection between a county supervisor that has created a real connection with his district. So I ask you to consider this information. We have a county supervisor that is reflective of our communities and someone who can relate to the needs of all, I say all, of his constituents. And I thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next person we have is Lori Pisante.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lori Pisante and my pronouns are she, her, hers. I spoke at the last meeting and my title is Director of Civic Engagement for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. In addition to working on multiple redistrictings to fight for equitable maps, equitable community-based maps, our mission at the Dolores Huerta Foundation is to inspire and organize communities to build volunteer organizations empowered to pursue social justice. We are a 501(c)(3). We are nonpartisan. And in fact, one of my favorite parts of the Fair Maps Act is the one Dr. Tilton shared with us today that political parties and incumbents, they cannot be considered in the redistricting process. One thing that I am going to ask this board and all folks listening to, to request of NDC for a future presentation is a clarification of some of those requirements that seem to be confused or at least not elucidated sufficiently based on what I've heard so far. Yes, communities of interest, absolutely super important. Glad for the explanation of what those are. They seem to be getting conflated with this issue of race. And it is definitely the case that just like the partisan gerrymandering, it is also prohibited to gerrymander based on race. But that does not negate what Kings County's obligations are under the Voting Rights Act. Let's be very, very clear about what that Voting Rights Act requires. Unfortunately, we face a history that we cannot escape. When Kern County was sued, and I encourage everyone to read that case, look it up online. Google Luna versus Kern County Board of Supervisors. Look it up, read it. One of the things they got in trouble for was when they interviewed individuals who worked for the county, it became very clear that they were told by the board, your goal is to make sure we only have one Voting Rights Act district in Kern County. That, this redistricting keeps it that way. When in fact, if the census numbers come out in September for Kings County and it demonstrates that Kings County can draw more than one majority minority district, a so-called majority minority district, they could very well be legally obligated to draw multiple Voting Rights Act districts if that data demonstrates that requirement. That is not racial gerrymandering. It is a reflection of what the Voting Act, Voting Rights Act requires of all jurisdictions to make sure that people's votes count, to make sure that they are not diluted by packing or cracking the districts. So let's be very clear about what those obligations are so that people are not conflating it with racial gerrymandering. with racial gerrymandering or with communities of interest. This is a really important point to be very clear about because this process has to be fair for everyone. So please, I really look forward to hearing some more information about that very important point. Accountability can feel like an attack when you've never been held accountable before. And hearing the voices that we do not hear today, again, at 10:00 a.m. on a Tuesday, our LGBTQ folks, our folks who speak Spanish, our folks who speak languages other than English, our folks who are working hard in the fields, providing food and economic viability, the powerhouse of our Central Valley, that's who needs to be in this process. And I really support every comment about making sure that that happens. All right, Ms. that, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person we had online was Barbara Castle. I don't know if she's still online. It seems like she may not be online anymore.
Any, we don't have any further speakers in the chamber as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and close public hearing, but I see we do have our county council, Ms. Freeman.
Yes, I would like to provide a couple of comments just to clarify some factual points that have been raised. First, I'd like to make it very clear that the county is offering interactive maps. They're offering maps and all variety of options for submitter. So those things are being offered, and they will, District R, I believe, is already up and ready, and then Map to Tube will shortly be ready and available. The data, of course, will not be the ultimate data. The data that's in them currently will not be the ultimate data because that hasn't come out yet, but the best data available will be contained there. Secondly, it was posited today that last week's public hearing was not a valid public hearing, and it's my opinion that last week's public hearing was a valid public hearing, that we're holding this hearing in order to overcome certain potential confusion with comments. But last week was properly noticed, and it was a valid public hearing, and so this is public hearing number two. We will, it will be in addition to the public hearings that were already scheduled, which means we will have a total of five public hearings as part of the redistricting process. The other thing that I want to clarify is the cost of the TRIPPE agreement. It's been stated twice now and through public comment both last week and this week that the cost of the TRIPPE agreement for public outreach assistance was $40,000, and that's inaccurate. The public outreach agreement with TRIPPE was $27,000. The remainder of the balance of that additional 13 was for the public mapping tools that your board elected to make available. And with that, I am here if there's any further questions.
Very good. Thank you. Questions from the board? Supervisor Riley?
Ms. Chairman, I just want to clarify on top of that, too. I started the $40,000 cost because that's what I got from staff last week, specifically from reaching out to Mr. Spikes and the time that him and I and the Deputy CAO spent along with our legal representative who just spoke right now. So that figure was given to me. I brought it up last week during the public hearing, and so there's an inaccuracy. It came from staff to me, but I ultimately said it, so I'll stand corrected, I guess. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Further questions from the board? Comments? All right. Thank you. And as I said earlier, we went ahead and closed the public hearing. We will now move back to the regular agenda of the Kings County Board of Supervisors, and we will move to Item 7, which is Board Member Announcements and Reports, Supervisor Riley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Let me get my notes real quick. I just, there's a, it's a tentative date. It could change, but right now it seems like a pretty strong date. But August 12th at 10:00 a.m., Assemblymember Salas and I were working to come out to the community of Kettleman City for the $2 million check presentation that, you know, we lobbied very strongly for, to build that long overdue pedestrian bridge so the residents of Kettleman City could safely cross back and forth over Highway 41. And so we'll be there at the intersection of Highway 41 where the crosswalk is, just north of the fire station there in Kettleman City. So we're inviting members of the community to come out. I want to thank Catherine, our clerk of the board, and any other staff who helped last week to get out an email to the folks that took the time when we were doing the letter writing campaign. There was many organizations that took the time to write a letter and individuals, and I felt that they should be made aware very quickly and let them know that they're welcome to attend. All the board members are invited as well. On the note of Kettleman City, I've also continued to work closely with Margaret Arachaga out of Senator Padilla's office, who is, she's from the valley. The day that I went to Sacramento to meet with Assemblymember Salas to ask him for the funding for this bridge, I met with Margaret on a phone meeting, and she conveyed her passion for the San Joaquin Valley and the community of Kettleman, and she's kept the word by keeping our need for further funding for that bridge. She's been keeping Senator Padilla posted on that, and as we reported last week, Senator Padilla has filed for $2 million more dollars for that bridge, and so we're going through that process right now. Again, I want to publicly thank him and his staff for their focus on the county of Kings and Kettleman City. And so his staffer, Margaret, and I invited her to come out as well, and we're going to do a site visit. We're working with Dominic and with the Deputy CAO as well. She'd like to come out physically and see that firsthand. And I believe that's all that I have there. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Neps.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Attended Antoinette Gonzalez's retirement celebration last Tuesday. Sonia talked about it a little bit at the meeting, 33 years of service to the Kings County Human Services Agency and kind of combines Zoom and just a few people in attendance. The Countywide Oversight Board of Kings County conducted their meeting to approve an amendment for the Avenel Revenue Bonds. That action will allow city officials and bond counsel to make the best decisions to take advantage of some low-interest rates, and so we'll be watching those rates and seeing, watching that project unfold. Also attended webinar on emergency management of mosquito abatement, the Kings County mosquito abatement does a great job in Kings County, and if you have any problems with mosquitoes and the disease they spread, contact the Kings County mosquito abatement, and they can resolve any of those issues. McMullen Area Groundwater Sustainability Agency also held a webinar. They're based out of the Kermin area, and they were talking about farm recharge projects, mainly in permanent crops like almonds, pecans, and walnuts. This is a spread flood irrigation type of floodwater to the soil. You do need the proper soil type and to accomplish the recharge goal and keeping the plants healthy as well as avoid waterlogging the soil profile, but it was a very good webinar and answered a lot of questions for a lot of growers. American Legion continues to have breakfast on Friday mornings if you're looking for a good breakfast. Midstate Fair rodeo competition, I have a son that competes in that, in that contest. Some of the best ranch hands from the valley and the central coast converge into passerobles in the Midstate Fair. Lot of teams this year, a lot of wonderful competition at the Hur Center. Unfortunately, no time was recorded, so it was a short day for us. And then on Sunday, the Cabrillo Club Scholarship Luncheon was held at the Paternal Hall, and the class members of 2021 received their scholarships and were introduced, and they're a fine group of individuals. They had enough funding for 100. They only had 92 applying, and so everyone received a $500 scholarship to help out for their college career. So with that, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
You bet. Supervisor Gins.
I would say we have one meeting this morning, this evening, on Wednesday, CAO Jeff Gardner, a lot of things outlined because of insurance and different issues that we have to deal with there. And it's all been dealt with, and it's a pleasure to work with them. That's, that's.
Very good. Thank you, Supervisor.
Friday, I attended the San Joaquin Valley JPA, which is the Amtrak Board, and discussed the route from Merced to Bakersfield and talked about the Amherst Station and what's going on with that. So it was actually a good meeting and very informational. Also on Saturday, attended the 100-year anniversary of the Lee Moore Volunteer Fire Department, gave a sort of speech. Amazing to know that we have, have been here for 100 years, and we have volunteers that will, you know, drop what they're doing to go help others without being paid or any reimbursement. And, you know, being a business owner in Lee Moore, you know, you see those trucks go to events and go to accidents or someone that falls or whatever, and amazing that the community stands strong behind that support. So it's a good organization, and I could see them go around another 100 years. All I got, thank you.
Yeah, very good, and I'd like to thank you for attending at my place for that. It was kind of interesting to hear the progression of the Volunteer Fire Department, and in numerous cases, there's three generations that have served in that, and some three generations that are currently serving together.
Right, and they also played, they sounded the horn, which goes back, I think, to the 20s, 30s. You could probably hear it from miles, I know, I think the end of that, 1968. And, you know, being on a farm and working in the fields at a young age, we had the Lucerne Winery had a noon whistle, Amherst had a noon whistle, Fire Station, Armona had a noon whistle, Fire Station, and Lee Moore had a noon whistle, and you could hear that. You could hear them, you know, I had one right by us within a quarter mile. It was really loud, and then shortly you'd hear the one in town, and then shortly you'd hear Armona, and then you'd hear Lee Moore. But that told the farm workers at that time, it was time to take a break. So that was technology back in the day, but I think 68 was last year they did that, and it went to different progressive analysis, all technic, so thank you.
Yeah, I know. It's good, good memories. I can remember as a young man, got pretty good at reading the sun as well and figuring out just about when lunch was, and then it could be, it would be followed up by all of the different alarms that went off in the local community. So with that, we will move to Board Correspondents. Mr. Spikes.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Under Board Correspondents, as previously was discussed by Mr. O'Dowd, there, I have provided you with four letters that we received on this subject regarding the open seat on the Dudley Ridge Water District Board. Essentially, what you have is a situation where Mr. O'Dowd has been duly elected to sit on that board, I believe, come December, but in the meantime, Mr. Jackson, who was on the board and was vacating, which Mr. O'Dowd was going to take that seat, has tendered his resignation earlier. In fact, it was on June 11th, 2021. And so your, their board apparently took the item up as far as making an appointment earlier than the December start date for Mr. O'Dowd but could not reach a consensus. And so we have received a letter from Dudley Ridge Water District indicating that your board, you know, may want to take this item up at some point in the future, and so it is within your jurisdiction, I believe, to make that appointment if they don't act within the 60 days it is required that they can act on their own. And so I guess what I'm asking your board right now is do you want to put something on the agenda for consideration of this matter, to be brought back for your board at some future date, or did you want to just take no action and, I guess, let them sit where they're at with the present four directors?
I would bring it back to.
Will you bring it back to the board next Tuesday?
We could bring it back to the board. I probably need to work with county council to make sure your board has to act within the proper timeframe in which you can take action. So we.
June 21st is the action presented to us. We have 60 days.
Yeah, June 11th was the action that the, when the vacancy was created.
Yeah, reservations.
And so we got, we started getting letters July 22nd, one month later, and we got two more letters as recently as July 26th. And so I think by next, it might be two weeks, but I think two weeks would be about the right timeframe for your board to be able to act.
After August 11th.
Yes, that would be the August 17th date.
So we'd bring it back at that time.
I would say bring it back and for discussion and come back.
And I'm not seeing any opposition to that, so by consensus, we could, we'll go ahead and bring that back.
Okay. We'll put it on the agenda for your board to consider taking any action you may deem appropriate.
And he is here today, so.
Mr. O'Dowd? Yes. Yes, he is. That's all I have under correspondence.
Okay. Upcoming events or future agenda items?
Yes, first to bring to attention is this flyer here in this valley, "We Never Forget the Need for Blood." It's a Darian Martin Memorial Blood Drive, Sunday, August 1st, at 9:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 101 East Bush Street in Lemoore. In addition to that, Kings County Agriculturalists in Support of the Year Salute to Agricultural Banquet is Friday, September 10th at the Lemoore Rec. Recreation Department, I assume, dinner at 7:00 p.m. Kings County Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon Friday, September 24th, 11:30 to 1:30 at Amherst Civic. As far as upcoming meetings and agenda items, budget hearings will be August 17th and 18th, and impact fee public hearing will be on August 17th. August 3rd, these items will be brought forth for your consideration. From Administration, response to grand jury report on Kettleman City Bridge, ARPA Study Session from Admin. Ag will have cooperative agreement with California Department of Food and Ag for the county's BE Safe Program, that's B-E-E Safe Program. Fire, out-of-state travel, Health Department COVID-19 update, of course. Two items from the Health Department, Breastfeeding Month Proclamation and National Breastfeeding Study Session. Valley Fever Awareness Month, also from Health, Human Resources, Class and Pay for Child Support Assistance, Job Training Office Agreement for Special Services, Child Support, Child Support Awareness Month, Probation Agreement with Champions Recovery Alternative Programs, Inc. for Residential Substance Use Treatment and Other Rehabilitation Services. Then on August 10th, Admin Agreement with Kings County Commission on Aging, Fiscier 2122 General Fund Contribution, Well Path Jail Medical Contract Amendment, and then from probation, the JAG Grant Application, and the Chief Probation Officer bringing the Kings Juvenile Center Population Self-Cap Adjustment. So those are the items that I am aware of that will be forthcoming in the upcoming weeks.
Very good. Thank you for that. We do have two remaining items on the agenda. One is Closed Session. We do have an 11 o'clock meeting of the California Public Finance Authority. So prior to going to that, I will acknowledge our Closed Session items today. First is a significant exposure to litigation, one case, Government Section Code 54956.9D2. Next is a personnel matter, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment, Director of Finance. Additionally, we have Conference with Labor Negotiator Meet and Confer, Government Code Section 54957.6, and that will be with the General Unit of COSIA, Supervisors Unit of COSIA, Firefighters Association, and the Detention Deputies Association. Madam Counsel, do you expect any reporting out?
No, I do not.
Thank you for that. So prior, before we enter Closed Session, we will adjourn to the California. So prior, before we enter closed session, we will adjourn to the California Public Finance Authority Regular Meeting, which was supposed to start 11, is now 11:07. So with that, we will adjourn to the California Public Finance Authority and then reconvene in closed session. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is next week, I guess, will be Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. So with that, we will adjourn to the California Public Finance Authority meeting. Thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Oh, I don't have, I understand. He's part-time.
We might have a box somewhere.
We got crayons in the back, he can play with it.
It is Tuesday, July 27th, 2021. This is regularly scheduled meeting of the California Public Finance Authority. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
I see his name online, he may be muted. It appears he is. Doug Verboen?
Here.
Craig Peterson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Okay, we have five present, kinda. All right. We will now move to Item 2, which is approval of the minutes from the July 13th, 2021 Regular Meeting. Board, what's your pleasure?
A motion presented. Verboen.
Okay, we have motion by Verboen, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have four present, or four voting yes, one no vote. Well, how do I?
One.
Pardon me?
One asleep.
It's an absent.
There he is.
There he is.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no worries. Any issues with the minutes? We have a motion and second?
No, sir, thank you.
And your vote is aye?
Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you. So we have five in favor, motion carried. We'll now move to the consent calendar. Board, what's your pleasure?
A motion was presented.
Okay, we have motion by Verboen, second by Fagundes. Please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries as well. We'll now move to Item 4, which is new business, and Caitlin, welcome.
Yes, thank you. So this is for O'Connor Woods Housing Corporation. They're a continuing care retirement community located in Stockton. They're a nonprofit public benefit corporation. They have a gated life plan community on 34 acres that serves and supports older adults and has been doing this for 30 years. They offer a variety of options, services, and amenities alongside a continuum of care designed to address the changing needs of older adults. They offer 45 independent living units, 85 assisted living units, 31 memory care, and 100 skilled nursing units on their campus in Stockton. And they have reached out to CalPFA to issue $36.5 million in revenue bonds to refinance $41 million prior issuance that CalPFA did not issue, for the record. Tupper is not required for this financing because it is a straight refi. The bonds will be offered based on CalMori, with the final maturity of 21 years. They do expect to be rated AA- by S&amp;P, and the issuance will be in compliance with our issuance policies. They do offer benefits. They employ about 300 staff members at their campus. Mentioned they have assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing facilities, and they offer financial assistance to residents who cannot pay. Just have questions on O'Connor Woods, if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Caitlin, any questions, comments? Seeing none, Board, what's your pleasure on the item?
Yeah.
Okay, we have motion, motion by Fagundes, second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries. We'll now move to Item 5, which is public comment. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board. Five minutes or a half for each item. Do we have any public comment?
I do not have anyone in chambers, and no one has their hand raised.
Very good. We will move to Item 6, which is staff updates. Caitlin, do you have anything for us today?
No update. Just want to say, nice to hear your voice again, Larry.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Happy to be, at least on an interim basis.
Yes.
All right, very good. With that, we'll move to Item 7, which is adjournment. And if there's no further business to come for the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Are you taking a break, Mr. Chair, or are you going straight in?
We'll need some time to transfer, so let's give, we'll take about five minutes and roll into this closed session.
Okay, thank you.
And everyone online, there should have been a WebEx closed session just sent out by Curia, so if you can log into that one, thank you.
Thank you.